All right.
All right, so the time is seven o'clock and I call this special meeting to order, please stand for the.
I am elected to the line of the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible in liberty and justice for all.
Special town meeting, September 5th, 2024. The Board of Selectment of the Town of Volentown, Connecticut here. Notice that a special town meeting of the town will be held at the Volentown Elementary School, 195 Main Street, Volentown, Connecticut on Thursday, September 5th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. To act on the following items, to consider and act on the following resolution. One, A, be it resolved that the Town of Volentown shall appropriate $50,000 from the Undesignated Fund to the Downtown Revital. For the Main Street and Beach Pond Road Sidewalk Project. Two, to consider and act on the following resolution, A, be it resolved that the Town of Volentown shall appropriate $60,000 from the Unassigned Fund to the Downtown Revitalization Fund for the Village Center Pedestrian Network Enhancement Project. Three, to consider and act on the following resolution, be it resolved that the Town of Volentown shall accept a 15,086 square foot section of DEP Trail 1 from the State of Connecticut for highway purposes. Four, to consider and act on the following resolution, be it resolved that the Town of Volentown contingent upon the passage of item three above shall convey a forty, 437 square foot section of former DEP Trail 1 to Josephine McGuire and Paul McGuire. Five, to consider and act on the following resolution, A, be it resolved that the Town of Volentown contingent upon the passage of items three and four above shall acquire a 437 square foot. Josephine McGuire and Paul McGuire to be added to the right of way of the former DEP Trail 1 for highway purposes. Nomination for moderator.
I nominated for me.
The nominations. All in favor of praising and conserving moderator?
Hi.
Niko. Ask for a motion to dispense with reading the call of the. So the motion's been made and seconded to dispense with the reading call, all in favor of that?
Hi.
Post carrying non-woeled dispense with that, and so I'm just gonna go on to item one. To consider and act on the following resolution, A, be it resolved that. Thousand dollars from the Unassigned Fund to the Downtown Revitalization Fund for the Main Street and Beach Pond Sidewalk Project. I have a motion to accept item one.
I made a motion.
Now it's open for discussion. So this is. Fair but timing out. So the first item is. We're requesting to transfer $50,000 to the Undesignated Fund, so the Undesignated Fund is money that we have from like the taxes or deeds or. This is for the, you guys see it? Oh, yeah. Can you hear me? I know.
Right time up.
So, okay. So. Received. All right, we applied for and received a TRIP grant, which. Was the amount of $950,511. We requested this grant money for sidewalks along the Village Center, along Main Street and Beach Pond Road, which is 138. To connect the town civic core with the primary real dest- retail destinations of the Riverside Mall and Bronson's Pool in True Value. So the new sidewalk will also include a pedestrian bridge over Dennison Brook where the current bridge is not sufficiently wide enough to accommodate an on-road sidewalk. We're anticipating that the bridge is gonna take most of the funds for this. Our original plan for the sidewalks. This is a map of it, origin- our original plan is to have the sidewalks go from Church Street all the way down to Bronson's. But on the other side of the road from where they are now, so it would be like in front of, in front of the package store and all the way up on that side of the road. So we went out to bid and the town's responsible for the engineering and design costs. So that's our, our portion of the, the money for the grant. And it comes to about $79,990 for the design and engineering. We went out to bid and we awarded it to Freeman Companies LLC. So we have 40,000 set aside already for this project. And that's why we're requesting the 50 to cover the rest and to have a little buffer in case we go over anywhere. So that's the explanation of that item. Does anyone have any questions? This was $950,511.
That's okay, we'll pass it back and forth, so the almost began on 30 Beach Pond Road. So my question is, have the, the homeowners who are along that route been notified of how much land is being taken? And I ask this because our property has an antique stone wall that's been there for 200 years, as does the property next door. And when they were doing the surveying, they were up above the stone walls looking to potentially take them. So has there been any solid information about what part is being taken, whether they are taking out these 200-year-old stone walls? Or anything laid out?
We're at the very beginning of this project right now, so the money is going towards the engineering and the design is what they're surveying for right now. So this, there will be, there will be more information once we actually know the answer to your question, because we don't right now, that's why they're doing the engineering and design.
So I think that's where it's difficult whether, like if we're taking a vote on this, because if, if we're looking to just set aside the money, I mean, you know that I've been one of the biggest proponents about having. You know, it's slower along this road and having sidewalks to be able to have the kids be able to walk in across the street and all of that stuff. So my side of it is like, hey, I, like, I've been looking forward to this and I would love to vote yes for this. But then when they, you know, when it's, we're gonna take out a 200-year-old stone wall, we're gonna take out all of the trees on the side of your yard, like that's where it's really hard without sufficient information. To feel comfortable with saying, oh yeah, let's put this money aside and move forward, when I feel like the information isn't there to support it.
Now, I totally understand that, the money that we're putting aside right now is to pay for the survey and this design study to actually know the answers to your question. And I think that whatever the, the study shows up, we can work around things, so I don't, it's not doing. The survey and everything is just a piece of the project, the rest of the project is working with the, with the property owners on how we can do it in a way that works for everybody, so. What happens if they say the only way to do this is to pull out all of these walls? I don't know if they're, right, we already have the grant and everything too, so again, I can't answer that until we know, like I don't, I don't know if they. They haven't said anything about any historical value on things, because we haven't had to do a, an archaeological like study or anything yet, that could happen later. But as far as I know, we haven't got, gotten there, this is the very beginning, we're just at the design phase. It doesn't, just having the design doesn't mean the whole project's set in stone either, so it, there, there will be more conversation on it. Because we will have to work with the property owners too, and not all the property owners are here either, because we, again, we don't know, a lot of that property is already the state's right away for the road. So that wall could very well be in the state's right away of the road. So I don't, I don't know the answer to the question till the survey's done, so. And without, without the survey, we couldn't even feasibly go forward with any sidewalks, so it's just a piece of the, it's just a piece of the project, it doesn't set anything in stone, so. I guess that was just probably when they did the survey and they presented it to you and said, this is the dollar amount. That they would have said, this is how far back from the center of the road. We haven't got, and we haven't paid for the survey yet, that's what this is, the money's to pay for the survey, so they're, they're just starting it, we haven't got any data or any, we, we know nothing yet, we haven't. Well, they're, they're at the beginning of it, they haven't, they haven't done the whole process yet, they're just done the survey part. Yes, most of it's going towards the study and then a little piece of it is for contingency, so. The state would turn all into your property anyway. The question was, how much does the state own into the, it's a state road, I don't know that answer either, usually it's 20 feet from the middle. We don't know the answers to those until the survey's done, that's why we start with that, so we know. Yeah, it's usually 20 to 25 feet, but it, it also depends on the age of the road and a whole bunch of different factors, so. If the, the house was there before the road, there's a whole bunch of different factors in that, and that's why we, we don't, we have to have a survey done, so. Are there any other questions? Have a motion to close discussion? All in favor of closing discussion?
Hi.
Any opposed, or is none? So I'm gonna ask for a vote on item one. So. Do you want, would do by hands, so all in favor of appropriating $50,000 from the Undesignated Fund to the Downtown Revitalization Fund for the Main Street and Beach Pond Road Sidewalk Project? All in favor, raise your hands. Any opposed? No, it was unanimous, thank you. All right, so item two. Be it resolved that the Town of Volentown shall appropriate $60,000 from the Unassigned Fund to the Downtown Revitalization Fund for the Village Center Pedestrian Network Enhancement Project. I have a motion to accept item two, please. So it's been accepted and it's open for discussion. More pictures from the last one. All right, so the next one is the 2024 Community Connectivity Grant. So this is a grant that we applied for actually in 2023, and we didn't get it in 2023. But they asked us at the time if we wanted to be, keep our application in, so when the money became available, they could reconsider us again. So that was back in 2023, quite frankly, I actually forgot about. And then one day in July, I came into work and had the email that, congratulations, you are awarded $799,200 for, for this grant, and so that was pretty exciting. So the Community Connectivity Grant will bring the sidewalk network in the Volentown Village Center to where, like along with the TRIP grant. Visitors and residents of Volentown will be able to safely access the entirety of the civic, governmental, educational, recreational, and commercial resources in the heart of Volentown. This project connects with the sidewalks planned in the TRIP grant project. And this project is also part of the Gate Street Revitalization Complex Master Plan with the addition of new multi-walking paths. So. This grant was also, like I said, $799,200 for the construction of the sidewalks and the walking path. The town's responsible for the design, which we got some of it down with the master plan, but we're anticipating the design for the sidewalk portion to be $60,000. So because this grant was not planned for. We don't have any money set aside for this one yet, so that's what the 60,000's for. So you can see here in red, where the walking track along, along Constitution Field and a sidewalk portion on Gate Street. And the sidewalks on. Other section are on Preston City Road. So from where the proposed brewery is being built to connect it down to the other section. And also to have a sidewalk, crosswalk for Church Street, so that people can safely walk from the park to the brewery and back down around. This, this is a picture of the walking track on Constitution Field along the edge. And the sidewalk on Gate Street. And there is also sidewalk on the other side over here. And this is the master, the Gate Street Master Plan, so you can see the walking track on the outside on the right and the sidewalk along Gate Street. Does anyone have any questions? Any questions? Do I have a motion to close discussion on item two? I'm gonna ask for a vote on item two, all in favor of closing discussion? Any opposed, all right, so I'm gonna ask for a vote on item two. Which is, be it resolved that the Town of Volentown shall appropriate $60,000 from the Unassigned Fund to the Downtown Revitalization Fund for the Village Center Pedestrian Network Enhancement Project. All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now I'm gonna read item three, be it resolved that the Town of Volentown shall accept a 15,086 square foot section of DEP Trail 1 from the State of Connecticut for highway purposes. Can I have a motion to accept item three, please? All right, so item three is now open for discussion. All right, so DEP Trail. Is, let me find the picture. We are, I think the school's over here, maybe? DEP Trail's right along, it's right on the edge of the Grisbane Line on 138. It's a, it's currently owned by the State of Connecticut, and it's as an access road to the state forest. So DEP Trail 1 is currently owned by the State of Connecticut, like I said, as an access to the state forest. It currently has. Three. Four driveways on it of Volentown residents. Because it's a, it's not a private road, it's a public road, but a state public road, State of Connecticut doesn't, they don't plow. They do maintain, but they don't plow their state forest roads, which is, has been a historic problem for the town, because we have residents on that road. It's not a private road, so we can't say you have to do it yourself, we've gone back and forth over the years with the state. So we, we plow it as the town and we have historically for a while. We also maintain it historically as the town, because they actually just did some work on it this week, because the road gets so bad that it damages the plows. We also, like I said, we have residents on that road. So I asked the State of Connecticut, would they be interested in giving us the section of the road with the residents, where the residents are on it? So that we, because we already maintain it, we already plow it, it's, it's just made more sense. And for the residents that have property on that road, they have a actual access to their property, which they didn't before. So the section of the road that we would be acquiring is all the way up to, there's a stone wall down there. It can, it just covers all of the, the private properties. Did anyone have any questions? The road is currently kinda paved. We, we don't, we don't plan on. Bringing the road up to current road standards, we're gonna keep it as is, but it does have some sort of paving on it. We were talking, I talked to Public Works about it, if anything, they'll just treat it like our other roads, we do patch the potholes on it, and we'll probably just chip seal it like we've been doing, so. All the. Yeah. A lot of people thought we owned it already, when I went to, because a part of the process, this is a, this is a whole process too, because the state has to go through a whole process to, to turn over land too. They have a 30-day public comment and they're gonna have meetings about it, so we're doing our steps at the same time, because if, if it doesn't pass on our side or it doesn't pass on their side, then it's, it's a done deal, but. So we, we're starting our, this is our meeting to pass it, it has to be voted on by the residents, and it also, we had to get an 824 approval from planning and zoning. To make sure that it complies with our. Plan of Conservation of, Plan of Conservation and Development, which they, they approved it and said it did. So we got the approval and now this is the town meeting, and then we see what happens on the state side, so that's a process. Does anyone have any other questions? Do I have a motion to close discussion? All in favor of closing discussion?
Hi.
Okay, so now we're gonna vote on item three, be it resolved that the Town of Volentown shall accept a 15,086 square foot section of DEP Trail 1 from the State of Connecticut for highway purposes. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Okay. So now we're on to item four. Be it resolved that the Town of Volentown contingent upon the passage of item three shall convey a 437 square foot section of former DEP Trail 1 to Josephine McGuire and Paul M. McGuire. So we, we had to do a survey, this, the state and, and the town, we split the cost of the survey of the road, we had to survey the road for all the changes in the deeds. And while doing the survey, we found out that a corner, the corner of the road, which is up here. The corner, there's a corner of the road on the right-hand side here that is actually on the McGuire property, so. That's what this section is for, to, to transfer that section, I talked to McGuire's and they're, they agree because of the liability of the road being on their property. To transfer the little triangle in the right-hand corner of their property for the road. And this is the next item, but I'm gonna explain it now, and in, in, to like, so they're not losing. Value on their property or size on their property that they've been paying taxes on all this time. We're going to trade with them the equal amount of square feet, just shaving off, because for some reason, when we surveyed the property, there's like a V in the road, it's not straight across, so. We figured out an amount like to straighten the, the property off, but there's another little triangle in there. So it's, it just gives a piece, it's a swap of a piece of land from them to us and us to them, all of the rose part, so. We didn't what? Do I have a motion to accept item four? I have a motion to accept item four. Sorry. Um, did anyone have any questions on the first part of land swap? And this is all contingent that we actually get the road. All right, so can we have a vote on item four? Oh, sorry. A motion to close discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, so a vote on item four. Be it resolved that the town of Volantown contingent upon the passage of item three above shall convey a four hundred and thirty-seven square foot section of former DEP Trail One to Josephine McGuire and Paul McGuire? All in favor, um, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, and now I'm gonna read item five. Be it resolved that the town of Volantown contingent upon the passage of items three and items four above shall acquire a four hundred and thirty-seven square foot parcel of land from Josephine McGuire and Paul M. McGuire to be added to the right-of-way of the former DEP Trail One for highway purposes? So can I have a motion to accept item five, please? We had a motion in a second, so we have discussion, and I explained this before. If you need me to repeat it, I will, or if anyone has any questions? Okay, so do we have a motion to close discussion? Ron, Sandra, um, all in favor of closing discussion, say aye?
Aye.
Yep, brings everyone up there with an aye instead of a hand. Um, so we're gonna vote on item five. Be it resolved that the town of Volantown contingent upon the passage of items three and four above shall acquire a four hundred and thirty-seven square foot parcel of land from Josephine McGuire and Paul M. McGuire to be added to the right-of-way of the former DEP Trail One for highway purposes? Um, all in favor, raise your hand. And that's unanimous, so thank you. And unless anyone has any questions, we can call to adjourn the meeting. Yep. How much money is left in the Undesignated Fund was the question.
Right now, there is.
Hold on.
Um, we have seven hundred and eighty-two thousand in the Undesignated Fund, which is about eight percent right now, which we strive to keep it between eight and twelve percent. After the audit, there'll be more after the twenty-three, twenty-four be deposited into the Undesignated Fund.
Any other questions? All right, motion? Motion to adjourn, all in a second? Matt, all in favor? All right, thank you.